Okay, I'm gonna call this special meeting of the Board of Equalization of Oklahoma County. The quarter. Today is Wednesday, June eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. It is nine thirty-one. And this is decision day for us. Notice that this meeting was properly posted on June sixteenth, and we have a full house. Mr. Brett Towns, Mr. Reese Sellers, and I'm Eleanor Thompson. We have, well, the agenda shows eleven items, but we've already decided some of them. We'll announce when we get to it. Item number one is BOE number one twenty-four. This is the warehouse office not finished on sixty fifty South Harrah Road. The assessor dropped from seven oh five plus thousand to four hundred thirty-five thousand eight hundred sixty-three. And the property owner is now requesting fifty thousand dollars. And what he's really after is, is he's compared his tax liability to the surrounding area businesses and feels like he's being charged with more. And I guess the real question here is, is this building finished enough to be put on the rolls? At the informal, he said he would accept four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And now has dropped to fifty. There's construction going on at that intersection, so he's not gonna put down his paid driveway until they're finished.
My issue with this one is, I'm trying to extrapolate back to where this building was December thirty-first because the pictures that we saw were taken after that. Even though the outside was done, the building wasn't occupied, didn't have a certificate of occupancy. I just don't think it should have been put on rolls at seventy-five percent at that point. I really think we're just looking at the established land until it is completed, occupied, and goes on the rolls. And it doesn't even have to have the road to it for me to consider it being three-quarters. So that's my stance on it.
Yeah.
So you're down to fifty-four thousand dollars?
Fifty-four thousand four hundred and fifty because it's not done. It just goes back to my analogy. If it takes three years to build it, we shouldn't be putting them on the rolls at two years.
Until it's occupied.
Until it's occupied and in business, even if that's, you know, on.
Occupied, but at least, yeah.
Doesn't have a utility. It doesn't have a sewer hookup to it yet. I'm sure it has water and no one has electricity because they pull that in early, but.
I don't know that it's where it is because of a decision he just made. And he says that he's going across his father's land to get there. So he's doing something in the building. I don't know. Is he, you guys think he's just?
I think he's acting as his own contractor, and, you know, he's subbing everything out. Couldn't see any receipts to a prime contractor, so somewhat where they're having to access the building some way, and it looks from the appearance of the ware, they're coming in through his father's property and not off of his Harrah Road, because it didn't look like there's a lot of traffic there at this point, so.
I don't know what you guys thought about my question to him. If I offered him fifty thousand dollars, would he sell it to me? Obviously would not.
Right.
So I think in his mind, he knows it's worth more than fifty thousand dollars. The question is, is I recall the seven hundred and five was reduced to four thirty-five on the acknowledgement that it wasn't occupied.
Right.
Yep, the assessor's office, though, did state that it was out of the ordinary for it to be on the rolls prior to being completed. They thought it was completed in twenty twenty-four because they actually did have it on the tax roll even in twenty twenty-four, and they weren't aware that it was not until they got the claim.
So, but you're not acknowledging that the four thirty-five is an acknowledgement that it's not occupied?
Well, they adjusted it to a storage warehouse to get to the four thirty-five. They dropped it by twenty-five percent just by saying it's a storage warehouse, but they didn't, they didn't adjust it based off of the fact that it's not completed. Yeah.
Okay.
But from what I can tell, even in the picture, it's not storing anything. Been there because they're still doing construction.
Okay. Okay, so make your motion if whoever wants to make the motion. I think it's worth more than fifty-four.
I think, I think what, everything is there is worth it, but I guess, I just don't want to see things start to go on the rolls while they're still under construction without occupancy. So, yeah, I'd like to move on. Agenda item number one, BOE one twenty-four, that we set the fair market value of this property at this time for fifty-four thousand four hundred and fifty dollars.
I'll second.
How do you vote, Mr. Towns?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
But it's passed. Okay, so it's, okay, the next item on the agenda is BOE number one thirty-nine. Okay, so, no, that one's set. We're set. And then item three, one forty, it too was set. Okay, so item four is BOE number one forty-one. There it is. Okay, that's Stony Brook Apartments. So the assessor is at twenty-two, twenty-two million three hundred forty-three thousand one hundred and fifty-five, bound from twenty-six plus. And the property owner is asking for seventeen million, seven hundred nineteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. Okay. They agreed on the cap. In twenty-four, this property was valued at fifteen million five miles. So there's been an increase in the mind of the property owner. Okay, the comps present a mean and a median at twenty-four million eight and twenty-five three respectively. So the assessor is well under both of them. I have a no sales comp for the property owner, which means he rejected. Okay, so the new modeling that the assessor is employing costs to increase to be as much as one.
Yeah, that's several of those comps for twenty. One was twenty-twenty, and three of them were twenty-twenty-one.
Right.
Yeah, but there was one twenty-three and one twenty-four. I typically like to take two comps, but the mean for those two comps still comes in at twenty-five eight. So, you know, if we do take that into consideration, then the assessor's valuation still lies at twenty-two. Three forty-three, is that where we ended up?
Yes, three forty-three, one fifty-five. And the assessor during the meeting did say, though, that he would give another five percent deduction for the water damage that was around the building that went into account at work. So I think the assessor's valuation with that five percent is probably fair.
Okay, could you do a math on that one?
Yes, it's twenty-one million, two hundred and twenty-five thousand, nine ninety-seven.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for twenty-one million, two-two-five, nine-nine-seven.
Pertaining to agenda item number four, I move on BOE number one forty-one that we set the fair market value of this property at twenty-one million, two hundred and twenty-five thousand, nine ninety-seven.
I'll second.
How do you vote, Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Towns?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is BOE number one forty. No, no, we settled that one. Okay, so then we go to item six, which is BOE number one forty-three. This is the gym. Is this at the gym?
One forty-three is Sycamore Apartments.
Oh, Sycamore Apartments, okay. So the assessor dropped from sixty million to fifty million, one hundred and fifty-five. And the property owner would like to have a set evaluation at forty-five million, eight-two-nine-nine-one-seven. So he did.
So this is the comps, the assessor comps were really bad on this in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-one.
And twenty twenty-two.
Twenty-two, yeah, so I didn't like the assessor comps at all. The taxpayer comps were just better in twenty-three and twenty-four. The assessor should have taken those into consideration, so I'm leaning.
Did we have a twenty-four? Why do I have forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and six?
I think that's what they originally asked. Then do you have the forty-five eight, twenty-nine, nine seventeen? I think that's what they asked when she came in. That's what I have.
Okay, so which one do you do? Like the forty-seven eight that she asked for or the forty-five?
I like the forty-five.
Brett, what did you say?
Well, I didn't like the comps either. I think that's one reason why they dropped it from sixty million to fifty million. And I think that the model has a lot to do with the sixty million, however.
I don't like to drop it when they first, if they can first agree on one.
I could go into the middle. I could go.
Yeah, forty-seven, forty-seven. Forty-seven, okay. I'll entertain a motion to set the fair market value of BOE number one forty-three at forty-seven million dollars even.
Oh, even?
Is that what you said, Brett?
Forty-seven million, eight oh six, five eight three is what they asked for.
Forty-seven million, eight oh six, five eight three.
So I'll make the motion on BOE one forty-three that we set the fair market value at forty-seven million, eight hundred and six thousand, five hundred and eighty-three.
I'll second.
How do you, Mr. Towns?
Yes.
Ms. Sellers?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, next item on the agenda is BOE one forty-four. Quail Landing Apartments. This one has seven, seven point two percent vacancy rate. The assessor dropped three million dollars from thirty-two million, six hundred plus to twenty-nine million, two hundred ninety-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars, which is well under, on their comps, if we accept them, well under their median and mean. The property owner started out at twenty-three, eight-five-four, five-thirty, and dropped to twenty-two million, oh-seven-eight, seven-two-seven.
Again, the comps for the assessor's comps were not good on this one, twenty twenty, twenty-one, and one twenty-two.
And the property owner had a twenty-four.
Yeah, the property owner had a twenty-four, and there were four, twenty-three, so whatever comps available. So I'm leaning towards either just going with the income analysis of twenty-four, seven point one, six hundred, or with the taxpayer's original request of twenty-three, eight sixty-four. I can do eight fifty-four. I do either one.
I can do the two. I can do the twenty-four, seven, four, one, six hundred. What did you say?
I can go with it.
I'll make a motion on BOE one forty-four. I have number seven on the agenda to set the fair market value of twenty-four million, seven hundred and forty-one thousand.
Ms. Sellers have a vote? Oh, you said, Ms. Sellers have a vote?
Yes.
Mr. Towns?
Yes.
Six hundred even?
Twenty-four million, seven hundred forty-one thousand, six hundred. Thank you.
Okay, and the next item on the agenda is BOE one forty-five. Item number eight. Okay. This is Crunch Fitness, and the assessor landed at four million, four seventy, zero, five, two. And the property owner, I have four million, two hundred, no, four million. And I asked if they could settle on four million, two hundred and twenty-five. She said no. I understand that when you're leasing to something as peculiar or particular as a fitness center, that your next tenant may not do that, but they may. And I, the four million, two-two-five is where I landed. She took the average of the income approach and the, and her comps. She averaged the four million, two, with the three million, eight, and that's how she ended up at the four million.
Well, the income analysis is three million, three point eight, not four.
Three million, three point eight. I worked, so I had three million, eight, six, three.
Right, that was the income analysis.
Okay. This was a purchase in twenty-four, three million, twenty-five, and there's a, a sort of proof of one point two million in improvements. And she's saying, she didn't disagree with that. She just says that it may be for not for the next tenant.
That doesn't have any bearing to me.
Right, it's what, what, what those improvements did to the van.
And this is an owner. I mean, this is a, this is not a rental or a lease.
Right.
This is an owner facility, and they're treating it like a lease.
Right.
So I, the best information for me is a three twenty-four sale, and then the million, two improvements at four hundred, four million, two twenty-five.
Right.
So on BOE one forty-five, agenda item eight, I move to set the fair market value of this property at four million, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
I'll second.
Mr. Towns, how do you vote?
Yes.
Miss Sellers? Yes.
I vote yes. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is BOE one four-six. This is a triple net fitness center lease. The assessor is at five million, three hundred seventy-six thousand, six four four. No income data was supplied. The property owner would like to have a set it at four million, seven, six, eight, six, four, nine. So there's six, there's six hundred thousand apart.
To me, this is, this is the same rationale.
As the other.
On nearly the same timeline.
Right.
So you have a purchase price, and then you have a million, six improvements, which comes up to five million, three sixty-three, which is just a little bit less than the assessor, but the taxpayer's value.
Was, you had, was three point seven, six, three on the sale, and was it one point five for the improvements?
Well, there's one point five from, from the, the owner, and then one point six from the assessor. It's a hundred thousand dollars difference.
One, okay. That's what it was. Are you going with the five, three, six, three? I'm good.
So I'd like to move on agenda item one forty-six. Agenda item number nine, that we set the fair market value of this property at five million, three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars.
I'll second.
How do you vote, Mr. Towns?
Yes.
I mean, Mr. Towns, Mr. Towns?
Yes.
A Miss Bell's?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, so item ten on the agenda is BOE number one four-eight. The assessor did a big drop from forty-two million, eight hundred seventy-six thousand plus to thirty-two million, seven hundred eighty-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven, since apartments and many storage. The property owner wants us to set this at twenty-eight million, five hundred thousand. And he based this solely on an appraisal, which he had done in twenty twenty-four. Done eleven-one and signed December second. The median and mean for the assessor are thirty-two million, seven hundred thousand plus and thirty-three million, oh-seven, eight plus. So he is at the, at the median.
Yeah, the assessor's comps are good on this one, but I don't understand why the assessor's not taking into consideration the income analysis. It was twenty-seven million. Previously, he would take an average of the income analysis.
And the sales.
The sales, but in this case, he only took the sales. I ran, you know, I looked at the average between the two and came up with twenty-nine, nine, six, seven, two, five, seven.
What did you do, Brett?
I could go along with that. The sales, I, sometimes I discount that just a little bit more than fifty percent if you have good comps, but I could go with twenty-five in this case.
Yeah, because the, the adjustments are really big on this commercial property, this new system.
So what was your figure?
Twenty-nine million, nine hundred and sixty-seven, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars. So I'll make a motion on BOE one forty-eight, item number ten on the agenda, set the fair market value at twenty-nine million, nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
I'll second that.
Ms. Sellers, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Towns?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay, so the next, next item on the agenda is BOE number one forty-nine. This is item eleven, and it's the final one. And this one, these are apartments. The assessor made a substantial drop from thirty-three and a half million down to twenty-four and a half million. And the property owner would like to have a set evaluation at nineteen million, five, ten. And it, and it has every kind of problem in his mind that you get high turnover, turnover of occupancy, a high turnover of staff, a fluid vacancy rate, and a pretty substantial delinquency rate. Pro forma landed him at nineteen-five, which was, he said, eleven million seven. But the assessor's market analysis is a little different, and the sales, he's below his mean and median. The mean and median on these are twenty-five, nine, and twenty-five, four.
And in this case, the assessors, you know, the average between the pro forma and then the sales is the twenty-four, five. So I thought I'd reach back and start doing that again. So I thought that was pretty fair.
Twenty-four, five.
Twenty-four, five.
Yeah, I find that. I think the income analysis probably supports that pretty closely. The comps were questionable, so a couple of them aren't paying up, so I'm, I'm twenty-four, five.
So I'd like to move on agenda item eleven, BOE one forty-nine, and set the fair market value of this property at twenty-four million, five hundred thousand dollars.
I'll second.
Mr. Towns, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Sellers?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, that's the last item on the agenda for, so we're on for Monday and Tuesday. Monday, Monday to here and, and Tuesday. Monday, Monday to here and, and, um, Tuesday for decision day. We're gonna finally get rid of one thirty-one on Tuesday.
All right.
Okay, and we, after that, I guess we'll just wait to hear from, uh, well, we gotta come in the first of July for.
Excits.
For excites.
Yeah, it's gonna be, um.
Just a second.
No, it's been, um, or busy. Oh, no.
Okay, okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.